Follow meeting to order at seven o'clock. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If anyone, if anyone plans to-
I lost audio as soon as you started recording.
It seems to be back, Allison.
I took it off mute, that's why.
Elsa?
Yeah, so I took the notes, they're not going to get you. Called the meeting to order at seven, but I got them out.
Okay. All righty. If anyone plans to speak, would you please come up front because the mic will not pick you up in the back of the room? Okay, the first item here is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Are there corrections?
Yes. On the first page, down halfway-
We're not doing the minutes yet.
We're not doing the minutes yet.
Not yet.
That's just the agenda, just the agenda. Okay. Anything else on the agenda? If not, all those in favor of approving the agenda as presented indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Next item is approval of minutes, 4/25/2022. Is there a motion?
Make a motion we approve the minutes of 4/25/2022 as presented.
Want to second that, Joe? And a second? Okay.
Are we seconded?
We are. You're the second. Additions or corrections? Mary Lee, you said you had something?
Yes, down on the, the first page, we're halfway down, it says page three. M.L. Harris asked about lumber shingle and wood inspector. Should be inserted after wood. I don't know what that means. I had just asked what it was. I'm not sure what those last five words put in.
Yeah.
I only asked what that was, because I didn't know.
Okay.
Doesn't make sense.
Did you catch it, Allison?
Anything else, Mary Lee?
Uh, no.
Okay, Bob?
No, I didn't have anything to do with it.
Okay, Dick?
I'm good this time.
You okay so far, Allison? I guess so.
But that wasn't, that wasn't a correction that Mary Lee was talking about? She was just clarifying?
I just wanted her to take the last, let's see. One, two, three, four, five words off. After wood inspector take, should be inserted after wood.
Did you copy that, Allison?
Yeah.
Okay. Joe? Do you have any corrections?
Just one, on page two, second paragraph from the bottom. Gillen, it should be spelled G.I.L.L.E.N., not G.I.L.L.A.N. And that appears twice in that section.
Okay. Are we satisfied with the corrections? You have them, Allison?
Yes.
You do? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes with the corrections, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Moving on. Citizens' comments and/or concerns, not on the agenda. Yes, Jane?
Okay. Um, Jane Nicol from Blissville Road, and I am still waiting from the last meeting to get a letter or some type of confirmation on the fact that the town dropped those two dog tickets they issued me, which were illegal. It was brought up at the last meeting.
Yes?
Well, I just want some kind of confirmation. I've asked for it, I haven't received anything.
Which one are you talking about?
Uh, the dog tickets that they issued me illegally.
The zoning or?
No, no, the animal control officer or the police department.
The what?
The, I believe it was the police department.
I guess it would be.
But, so I reached out to the animal control officer. I was on vacation last week, Jane, so you probably know that. Um, I don't know what, I was told that they weren't issued in error, that there was an issue with the, that your dogs were not, they were barking when they weren't working.
Well, they are working because they're working to guard plants and animals.
Is that then something that should be taken up with the police chief?
Well, I would meet with you if you want to come in with the chief's here, so we can go through why, because I don't have the, all the particulars on it right now, but they're saying that they weren't issued in error.
Okay.
Okay, even though the last meeting you said they were.
I said if they were.
Oh, no, well, they said they were. I've got it on record.
Okay, Jane, anything else?
Yes, I am. I am also up here because two months ago, I came to the meeting and you hired a lawyer to look into the matter, and the last month I came up here for an update. Nothing was done yet, and I still haven't heard anything, and this has been an ongoing issue since 98. And I think I've allowed a lot of time, as I've given the town a lot of the copies of letters that I sent you guys even back in 2007, and the same questions are still not answered.
As soon as the attorney reaches a decision, that information will be provided to you, Jane.
Even though I've asked since 98, correct, and 2006?
Attorneys work on their schedule, not on yours or mine.
I know, it's just that I've had my life endangered so many times, and I would like an answer to this, and I think I'm entitled to it a little bit quicker than like 16 years.
Okay. Thank you, Jane. Anyone else who wishes to address the board? Item's not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Joe?
Could I just make a point of order? I think in our previous meeting, we asked that those who attend via Zoom identify themselves with a screen name that reflects their first and their last name. I would appreciate it if the individuals that have just used their first name would add their last name, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to Procellicor treatment, Lake Bomazine. I believe on this matter, the only thing that we are dealing with or asked to deal with is, is the board wishes to take a position on this item. I believe we have heard extensive comments, emails, telephone calls, personal contacts, a two and a half hour meeting. So, based on that, does the board wish to take a position as far as the treatment, and that information would be submitted to the Department of Environmental Conservation, which is the agency that deals with issuing this type of permit? Bob, you have a motion?
I move that the Castleton Select Board be opposed to the use of the herbicide Procellicor to control erosion, erosion milfoil in Lake Bomazine. We also would encourage the state and the Lake Bomazine Association to work on finding solutions to control milfoil without the use of herbicides or pesticides.
That's the motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a second. Is there any board discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 The vote is unanimous. Okay, we'll move on. Castleton Village School update, Joe Mark and Mary Lee Harris.
Do you want to start, Joe, or do you want me to?
I think as chairman, it'd be great if you'd start.
Okay, we, we've now had four meetings, a lot of good ideas, not necessarily financed, figured out how that would work. We have people that are interested in making it into a community center using a recreation department, Boys and Girls Club. Tiersa Brannick came to our last meeting. She asked for some information, I believe, from Mike about square footage, and she's interested in leasing or something, putting her childcare in there. She needs to start by June or July, where the Recreation Committee and the Boys and Girls Club want a chance to apply for grants and things, and they're looking at October, November. So, so far, that's basically what it is. All of the ideas are good. Some are just more viable than others. We have another meeting, two more meetings. One is going to be the 19th, and the other is June 1st, and they will be held at the village school. And Joe has suggested, and I agree, that we should maybe start half an hour early. So if anyone wants to take a tour of the building before we actually have our meeting, it will be available. Anything else? Did I miss anything, Joe?
Not really. I, I, it's my understanding that Boys and Girls Club is probably ready to make a commitment to the space on, on the proper terms soon, but yes, Tiersa's timetable is the most immediate, and we need folks eager to create a combined home for a community center and the Rec Department are interested in trying to generate a plan utilizing, oh, an earmark they've requested from Senator Sanders and the Council on Rural Development. I, for one, have urged the, that group to consider becoming a nonprofit organization, and there are a number of models where nonprofits have taken on facilities like this and turned them into multifaceted community centers for their regions. At this point, I'm not sure that the group is eager to do that, but I believe that would be one way to move forward. I think we're also interested in getting an assessment from commercial realtors as to how marketable the building would be either for sale or for lease. We have an appraisal that has put numbers on what those two decisions would be, but we just don't have an idea whether in the current economic climate, this is the kind of property that companies or industries or businesses would be looking for.
Any questions from the board for either Mary Lou or Joe?
I do have, but let them go first.
No, I don't have any, anything more to add.
You don't? Anything, Mary, Joe? Mary Lee, I'm sorry.
Anything more to add than what we already have?
Bob?
I'm just, I'm just nervous that the expenses won't get covered if we wait till October or November, we're well into winter, and I just want to see the expenses covered. If it's going to cost us $70,000 to heat that place and all the other stuff the winter time, I just don't think we can wait till November to see if we're going to have the funding, and I don't want the taxpayers to take the role on it. That, that's my biggest concern.
Okay. Dick?
No questions at this time.
Right. I don't have any questions at this time. Mike?
I just have a statement. Sorry, I was on vacation last week, so I haven't had a chance to kind of disseminate this, but I did talk to Brooke Farrell and Chris Cole, and as of 1 July, the power will be turned off to the building, water, sewer, and there's another issue with PCBs, if it stays as a school, that they want to address, because if it's a school, it has to meet certain criteria, and I asked them, are they just going to leave us in alerts like that as far as turning everything off? And they are. They don't have any, they have zero budget. The original $170,000 budget, they cut that down to $33,000 anticipating that they weren't going to be there for the school year, so that's kind of where they're at, and they had all the stuff in the building, they asked the town if they, if the town wanted the furnishings that were in the building.
Know that you're talking about that. Does the town of Hubbardton or the town of Castleton have any money in the budget or expenses for this project for next year?
That the Select Board and the voters approved? Absolutely not.
Absolutely not? Thank you. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Joe?
I, I missed part of what the manager just said there. Did he mention PCBs?
I, I did, Joe. I just found that out from them, that in, next year, if a building is being used as a school, it has to meet certain, has to be tested to meet the certain criteria, and it's age dependent on the age of the children in there, but that's a concern for them if, if we don't take that building over before that takes effect. We're still, and we're still dealing with the, the asbestos, which we don't know, they're not going to pay for the test in the other, in the older part of the building, whether the baseboard has the glue in it that the newer part did that had asbestos in it.
Any other comments from the board, questions? If not, Joe Bruno?
Joe Bruno, since the school board got their budget passed on the second round, they took $33,000 out of the budget. The original budget was $170,000 for the maintenance on that building, so that would lead me to believe there's $136,000 floating around out there somewhere. And I don't know how many of you are aware of this, they had $4,750,000 of surplus money last year that they spent. So I would think that they would help the town of Castleton and Hubbardton to maintain that building at least for this coming year. $136,000, I believe, would do it. So I don't know what Brooke told Mike, but look at the figures I have. I went to the meeting out there, and I wasn't aware that there was $4,750,000 of surplus money last year that they divvied up amongst different areas out there, so I would again ask them to maybe help out maintaining that building, and the only other comment I'll make is, whatever we do with it, I hope, like Bob says, we can at least cover expenses so that it doesn't become a burden on the taxpayers.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks.
Any other comments on this item? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Mary Drogee. I am a representative of the group who's interested in seeing this building continue as a community center for the town, and I have a couple of comments. One is that regarding the budget and money, there is almost one and a half million dollars that has been given this town through COVID money, I'm not sure, ARPA money, that is available for this town to decide how they want to spend it, and my impression, as someone who's come to a lot of Select Board meetings this spring, there's not a lot of transparency on how that decision is being made. So I feel, like Joe, that there probably is some flexibility here for money to pay for this building, to keep it viable and not falling apart for the next year. That's something I believe could be considered, with all due respect. I also feel, and many people feel, agree with me, that the process for making this decision has been, I'll just say it, frustrating. There has been no process. There's been no timeline, there's been no criteria that we've needed to meet. It just, I feel like the ad hoc committee, with all due respect, Joe and Mary Lee, you were given the authority, and the two people from, the two respectable selectmen from Hubbardton, the authority to come up with a process, and no process has been come up with other than meeting every two weeks. I feel there needs to be criteria, there needs to be deadlines. If the town says we're putting zero money into it, then just say it, right? And we'll do our best to come up with a budget that doesn't rely on town money, but it, until there's actually some parameters for what we're supposed to produce to you in order for you to make your decision, it's very hard for us to respond. And yes, we did, we've been working on this for over a year. We would like this to be a resource for both towns to enrich our community so that all ages have a community center. We have a lovely senior center, we have great kids programs, we have very little for the age group that's here right now, right? Like adult league programs, community events, family fun nights, movie nights, a community theater, there's so many possibilities, and there's so many people excited in town for this opportunity. Eighty-four percent of the town voted to keep this building in town ownership, and I think you, with all due respect, you all need to remember that. Now, yes, it's absolutely true, there is no line in the budget that's been voted for this building next year, but there is money. There's money around, and I feel like the people in this town need to be given an opportunity to show how much support there is for a community center, and, and the first step is to giving us a clear process.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, we'll move on. Move on to due diligence period extension consideration for Hale and Hale Resources. Zach and John, you have a comment you want to make? We have a, we have a document that you submitted to us. Okay, go ahead.
Can I recuse myself?
Certainly.
You have a, you have a hand up to somebody on Zoom.
Pardon?
Is it, hand up, David Willby has had his hand up on Zoom from Boys and Girls Club. I didn't catch it before you moved on.
Well, I think we just heard about that, didn't we?
I'm not sure, he's, he's the one that was hand raised.
Unless he wants to make a brief statement.
He's, he's muted.
He didn't?
David, you go ahead.
Okay.
I was just going to underline what Mary said, and also the notion that I think what Joe said is right too, that we would be able to create a budget and a clear plan well before November. I would hope really sometime during the summer, we would be able to do that, if not sooner. In fact, once we, once there's a clear path ahead, I think that we could start to talk about, you know, with the Rec Department, with all other interested parties, how that would exactly work, and it, it wouldn't need to take so long before we would have a pretty solid plan, and we've already started to meet about that. And, and also, I just would, again, thank Mary for all her hard work and just all the, everything she's said is really what we've heard from people and what we're trying to do, basically for everybody, but that was it. Thank you very much for giving me a moment.
You're quite welcome, thank you. Anything else on this?
I just want to make a statement, Mr. Chairman. For the folks that are still on Zoom, it's been asked if you have just your first name or on there to, or a phone number to change it so we know who's participating in the meeting for a minute. Appreciate it.
Okay. We'll now move on to due diligence period extension consideration for Hale and Hale Resources. Zach, I guess you were standing once, you're up again.
Mr. Chairman, would you like a motion before we start discussion?
Whichever way you'd like to do it.
I would like to make a motion that we approve addendum one to the purchase and sales agreement between Johnny Hale and Zachary R. Hale and the town of Castleton on the 12, 18.28 acre parcel on Sand Hill Road in Castleton, parcel ID number 0901100011, and authorize the town manager to sign this document.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second. Discussion. Don't go away. Don't get, don't get hurt.
I can go first.
Okay.
I just wanted to get the motion out there first.
Okay.
So now we can talk about it.
Any other, any other comments from the board? Hearing none. Okay, Zach. Zach Hale?
I sent this, Zach Hale, Hale Resources, and I sent this addendum to Mike and, and wanted to come and request approval from the board. The only contingency that we would like to have removed is the contingency for financing, so that was the only change that we would like to be, have, have made to it, so. Other than that, I have no other comments.
Okay.
I believe the document I have in front of me has-
Then, well, so, about halfway down the first page, purchases shall have 90 days from receipt and so on, permits from the state of Vermont described by section 17 of the agreement to procure financing and so on, and then it goes on to say that if financing is not available, then the town will be required to return all of the purchase price. Are you withdrawing that?
All of the deposit, correct.
You're withdrawing that, okay.
Yes. Which at, at that time would be about the $18,000 or so.
Okay. Everybody understand that? Okay. Any other comments from the board? Okay, at the last meeting, a board member asked for a ruling or a recommendation from the town attorney. We have that, and the town attorney, basically, I'll summarize it quickly, recommends that we sign the purchase and, and sales agreement. The reason we did not receive that last week was because the town attorney was getting a new hip, and he thought he was going to be back in the office by Friday. That was pretty optimistic, but he did, was able to draft the letter today and, and get it to us. We all have copies of it. Basically, he recommends that we approve the extension of the purchase and sales agreement due diligence. Any other questions on this? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Can we speak from?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, sir.
I would like to address the board on the motion that my friend here is suing.
The only thing that we are discussing is the due diligence, sir.
Right, and that's what I want to address.
How long is it going to take you?
Well, I'm five of you and every guy, I did think of you. I'm going to try to be brief, honest, honest, I'm going to try to be-
Honest, Angie, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, first, I'm going to try, I'm really young, but I thought what I would do first of all is just give the board a copy of some pictures. This is what we're talking about. I'm from, I'm John Gillen, I'm from Sand Hill Road.
Yes, John.
Can you just do me a favor?
You addressed us at the last meeting.
Pardon, my friend?
You addressed us at the last meeting.
Yes, and I just want to give you pictures now, and then I want to make one statement. I'm, I'm hurrying along. I want to give this to the Hale and Hale people, make sure we agree, that's the building that's on the road. Okay, now, okay, very quickly, honestly, what I want to do is see if I can't convince the board on my left and Hale and Hale on my right to abandon this effort to invest in what is going to be a white elephant. And, and I just wanted to mention to you, there is on Route 4E, the Vista Senior Home Care Center. I stopped by there just Saturday night, and it looked abandoned. It looked as if nobody was there, maybe there were three or four cars, but I didn't see a single person at this, it's the Old Cartina Inn, if you know where the Old Cartina Inn is? It was supposed to be an elder care place, and it was empty. It's just desolate. And then I was thinking of you guys before you got involved with, um, Do, 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 Do the Pro, um, you, you, there was another company that was thinking of putting a senior care facility right there on Do the Pro, College of St. Joseph's, the provider, and they looked at it, and they looked at it, and they looked at it, and then they said, this is not a very good business idea, so they pulled out. They're gone, and I'm glad you guys are there, but now the possibilities are much larger than just a senior care facility. And then I'm listening to the Rod Public Radio earlier last week, and it turns out that there's a senior care facility in Brattleboro that closed, and they closed because they couldn't get enough residents, and because, and because-
Nick has a point of order.
Oh, okay.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, how is this relevant to the-
Because I want you to-
Extension of the due diligence?
It's not. It's not relevant to the due diligence. Those are items for the Development Review Board, not for this board.
Well, okay, thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry, John. Okay, we were ready to vote on this. All those in favor of extending the due diligence period?
Does anyone else get to-
Pardon?
Questions? We get to ask questions of this due diligence? What's, what is the point of the due diligence?
Point of the due diligence is to give the developer additional time to secure permits, and we have a letter from the town attorney recommending that it be granted.
And why do they need additional time? What have they been doing for the last several months to take that time?
They've been drawing preliminary plans, they had to deal with COVID, they had, and they also had to make various appearances before the Development Review Board, which they did.
So this is due diligence to now make the purchase available, is that correct?
That is correct.
You're approving that the purchase?
Pardon?
You're approving the purchase at this point?
No, we are not. We are still, the town of Castleton is still the owner of the property and will be until it is acquired, if it is acquired, by the developers.
So as a member of the town and who wants to get the most bang for our buck, shouldn't the board be doing due diligence and also saying that at the moment you buy the property, you have to pay fair market value for it? It's worth a lot more than one twenty-five thousand now, correct?
We're not into that, sir. We have, we have a, we have a purchase and sales agreement.
But you're changing it.
Timeout. We had a purchase and sales agreement that was, is being honored by the developers, and according to the town attorney, should be honored by the town. That is a valid document. Now, would you please state your name and your, and your residence?
I'm Frank Pickett, and I'm on Sand Hill Road.
Thank you very much.
Well, you don't want to hear from us because we live there.
We've.
But I'm asking you about this thing, and you're not answering my question.
I'm trying to make my best.
Okay, thank you. If you're doing a due diligence, it should be both sides. If they're coming to the table and saying, we can't do it in the time we originally agreed to, which I believe is what you're saying, and you're saying, okay, everyone, the lawyer says, let's go ahead and do it, then there should be something on the town side, should get something out of it, too.
There is.
If you're damn determined to do this project, which it sounds like you are, that you're going to go ahead and do all this due diligence, they said, in the original agreement, they agreed to a certain timeline, correct? Is that correct or not?
It was reasonable at that time.
Okay.
But it takes time to get permits.
It does take time.
It takes time to get permits, and it takes time also, and they will also go through Act two fifty, if they receive a local permit.
Does, does the seller not have the same timeline as things change? If I'm selling my house and it takes you six months to agree on it, and the price goes up by a hundred thousand, am I not allowed to change it?
No.
No, not once you have a signed contract.
Not, you're changing the signed contract. You're changing it.
No, we're not.
You're adding an extra amount of time to.
All right. We tried to answer it for you. Thank you very much.
You don't want to answer the question. Thank you.
I tried to do my best.
You're doing a good job.
Okay, well, I'll call the vote on this. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 No.
And the vote is four to zero. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item. Tree removal. Chris Fouracre.
Good evening. Chris Fouracre, DPW. So this is really a follow-up on the town, from the town manager, I think we spoke about this a few months ago, regarding the removal of, of various nuisance trees around the, around the town. So in front of you, you should have two quotes, one from Valencourt and one from Trees Incorporated. So I'm following up on this at the request of, as I said, the town manager and the tree warden, trying to help them out a little bit. So you can see, I personally took both companies around town and looked at the identified trees, and certain ones will, of course, stump, will remove the stumps, grind them out, anywhere where they're in a residential setting, obviously. Those that are not, we wouldn't, we would not remove the stumps, we're grinding them down. But you can see the price difference. One from Trees was ten thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. The second from Valencourt was nineteen thousand two hundred dollars.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, you, you ask it before I ask mine. Go ahead.
No, you can go first.
Nah, you go first.
You're the chairman.
That's all right. I'll, I'll defer to you.
I, I can't even begin to read this, Chris.
Yeah, it was hard to, it was hard to scan. I have the originals here.
I'm going to take your word for it, that these are apples to apples.
Yeah.
One's not removing less trees than the other.
Nope, they're both the same. Myself and the tree warden went around, we marked all the trees, so.
Okay.
Very, very familiar with it.
Just, there's a huge difference.
There is a huge difference.
Can you?
There was a huge difference when, when we toured the town with the tree companies. One got out of the truck, actually walked around, looked at it. Another didn't leave the truck the entire time.
It's, can you, can somebody explain?
Part of my recommendation, if you're asking myself as the public works director, yes.
I think I know where that's going.
Okay, thank you. Yes, but I'm not the tree warden.
What did you, what did you ask? I didn't hear what. I asked him if the fact that one of the, one of the bidders got out of the trucks and looked at the job, each job, and the other one did not, have anything to do with his recommendation, and he's, he said yes. Okay. Do you have something to add, Mike?
Just the, this typical way, there's, there's such a disparity between the two. It's, it's always that way.
Okay, okay.
Yes, Mary Lee?
Are we budgeted for this?
Pardon?
Do we have a budget for this?
I was going to ask that, too, Mary Lee. You go ahead.
I believe, ma'am, it's supposed to be on the ARPA list, or a recommendation to be placed on the ARPA list.
Some of it we have budget for. I have, at my office, I have the breakdown, but some of it was going to be, it's on the ARPA request list.
So is this something you want a motion to, or just information tonight?
Just information right now, right?
Just information. I was asked to get the quotes, and I was just following through. You're welcome.
How long are these quotes good for, sir?
I would say thirty days, standing quote.
The reason I'm saying that is we haven't made any commitments for ARPA funds yet, and I'd be reluctant to start doing this with several discussions that need to take place, one of which, in my opinion, is public input.
There's only about, if I recall, there's probably only about three thousand dollars in tree removal, in the tree ward's budget.
And there's some in highway as well.
Yeah, a little bit.
But that's why, that's why there was no request for a motion on it. It was to bring your attention to the cost associated with this as we, as the select board will start entertaining ARPA stuff. I know we haven't had any public meetings on it yet, but this was, this was just a part of that list. I'm sorry, my eye hurts. So that it was on, so you saw what, what the cost is associated with it.
What's the official date on this? Because you said we have thirty days. What?
Well, the last one I did was just last week on, I believe, that was last Thursday was the second one, four twenty.
So we'll have to redo this again come first June?
Yeah, yeah, but it would give us an idea
Okay.
Of where we fall, at least.
Okay. Yeah, the one from Trees Incorporated, I'm sorry, can I speak?
That's okay.
Is day to date April fourth.
Yep.
So thirty days is kind of.
Yeah.
Hurry down.
He was, he was flexible, he was romantic. I told him that we were.
So I guess I would request either the public works director or the town manager to tell us where, which portion of this is highway, which is tree ward and budget, and which is ARPA money?
When, I'm prepared to do that once, once the board's ready to entertain ARPA, so I can give you the breakdown.
Okay.
Because I put twenty-four thousand dollars on there originally, not knowing where it was in a land, and so it actually landed about half of that, so that's.
And there are more trees, and the ones what we can take down, we push them over the rotor, we do that. If they're near a power line, we will not touch them for obvious reasons.
I guess I'm a little confused. Why are we waiting if there's, you've got twenty-four thousand dollars set aside?
No, that's what, that was my, on the original, when I sent out the ARPA list of things that have been discussed, it was on that list, and it was twenty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, but there is, there is ARPA's, there are ARPA money in, in an account, right? Correct?
Yeah, the town's, the one point three four eight million that the town's going to receive over the two years, we got, we got half of that now.
We have.
In our coffers, half of it now.
Why are we waiting on this, then?
Because I don't think the board was ready to make a decision on splitting out the ARPA stuff right now, like, until you have a better chance to, a better opportunity to talk about it's in entirety, because if you start cementing a little bit here, a little bit there, then all of a sudden, these big projects, like you were talking about sewer extensions, if you don't have any money to do that, then it's.
Well, it sounds like money, if you have money in the tree ward, and you have money in the highway department, you're not going to have, take much ARPA money to make up the rest of the ten thousand.
Probably, probably not now that it came in as ten thousand, because I originally, we anticipated it was going to be about twenty-four thousand. So it'd still be a shortfall, but it won't be a large shortfall. Be, maybe, maybe three or four thousand dollars.
I just don't, I don't understand why we have to wait. I mean, this is something's going to, it's going to get done.
Eventually, it's going to have to.
Well, the longer we wait, the more chance of these trees coming down across the roads or into somebody's house.
They're already coming down. We're picking them up as we go, so.
Yeah, well, there you go. I, I, I don't know. I make a motion, we approve. Trees Incorporated, ten thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars to remove these trees.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
I think it's premature to make this motion and approve it until we know where the money's coming from.
I agree.
I do agree with Mr. Spalding that it needs to get done, and it needs to be done, I would think it would be advisable to do it this year. Do you agree with that?
I would, I would concur with that opinion.
So. Can we get the numbers together by the next meeting?
Well, we have to, we have to get a rebid, but one of the, I think, address.
Sure.
So one of the other options is if ARPA's off the table, the shortfall from the budget, the two, the tree ward's budget and the highway budget is to look at end-of-year highway department surplus, if there's any, and the board makes a motion to use that money, and that way we don't pass it into a future budget.
Okay.
We are going to be riding close, because we are at about twenty-five thousand dollars remaining until the new fiscal year.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion, but I don't want this to be August, September before we revisit it. Once again, Bob, I do agree that it needs to get done. I just think we need to know where the money's coming from. Okay, okay. We're not talking large money. That, that was my point.
So you withdrew your motion, Mary Lee. Did you?
I'll withdraw.
You draw your second? Okay.
Fair enough.
Hopefully, could we move forward on this at the next meeting?
I don't know if it'll be next meeting, because I won't have that, that information yet.
Okay, then, as soon as, as soon as reasonable, yeah.
Mr. Marcus.
Joe? Yes, Joe?
I, I have expressed this concern in past meetings, and I'll say it again. I, I think it's time for us to lay out for the community a process whereby we're going to consider uses of that ARPA fund, and I'd, I'd like to suggest that at least by our next meeting, we have a plan for that and a timetable.
Excellent suggestion. Anyone in the board have a problem with this?
No, I just said a few minutes ago, we need public input, and I think Joe's right. We need to get.
Okay.
How far you know what's and get going on this.
You all set on that, then, Chris?
I'm all set, sir.
Okay, you're still up for the next one?
Chris, one more question, sir?
Sure.
Just a quick thing. How big a deal would it be to get trees to re-quote this? Would it be as simple as a whole?
Wouldn't be hard. I think, I think you'd just say it's good.
Are you willing to do that sometime in the next two weeks?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to fuel, fuel point system recommendation. You're still up, Chris.
Okay, so this is an update. I think we briefly talked about this a few months ago. I am not asking for anything, but it is more of an update. So as you know, looking at the slides, our fuel system that we have at the highway garage is a little bit antiquated. I do not know when it was put, when it was actually originally put in. I've been told it's been there as long as the mechanic, it's been around its twenty something years. But how this all came about was the town manager had asked me to look into upgrading the fob, fobs and the cards on it so that we could gain more security and get better of accounting of a, an expense, one of the biggest expenses to the town, obviously. Right now, we are working off an antiquated system that is best described as a dot matrix printing system. So in other words, it's a program on Brent's computer in the garage, and once a month at the beginning of the month, accounting has to come in. She is the only one that knows how to manipulate the system and print out fuel usage across the highway department, the fire department, so on, so forth. Anybody that takes fuel out of there by vehicle. None of the vehicles match up to the actual fobs. Some fobs work, some fobs don't. There's numerous pins around town. So some people from the fire department, I don't know this for a fact, can use a pin that was assigned to somebody else in order to make the system work. There's also a universal pin that everybody seems to know what it is, but they just type it in and dispense fuel, and it's not recorded against the vehicle or a person. So in order to correct that, we did a little research to see what our options are. Okay? So really, the reason we're investigating this, just to recap briefly, is security, better situational awareness on the use of our fuel, where it's going, how much is being used, and who's using it, to get an accurate accounting statement. Okay? So, long story short, I reached out to a variety of vendors that are in this. Beardsley, FPH, Star Petroleum, DNM, a few others I haven't even heard of. I got them all off of the pre-approved state of Vermont V Trans contractor list. It was a lot harder than I thought to get someone to actually call me back. Okay? So I got about three people to call me back out of a list of about seven. Out of that, I've had really only two engagements with two separate companies. One is FPH Tank and Star Petroleum. My encounter with Star Petroleum was very brief. So again, I will go back and say, when I make a recommendation, it's based on my interaction with the company that I'm in the professionalism. So we were presented with a couple of options. One is a new smart fill system that is a cloud-based system on the internet, meaning that there is no program that needs to be installed on a computer. You just access the internet to a certain website, you punch in your password, and you can access who used fuel, when, where, by person, by vehicle. You can actually turn the fuel off between certain hours. You can restrict the number of gallons, on and on and on. So it satisfies our need for security, one. Two, it also satisfies our need for simplicity, two, because it's not loaded onto a, the town server, and it's not loaded onto a single computer, so multiple people can access it. Three, it satisfies our accounting requirements for the fuel, i.e. if we're spending sixty thousand dollars a year on diesel fuel, who's using it, who is it getting charged back to? Is it coming out of the fire department budget, vice, the highway budget, vice, the transfer stations budget? Okay? So that's the, that's really the bottom line there. If you go to page three, this is a second proposal. It's a hybrid system to the system that we already have. And I like to give you, I like to give you two courses of action to compare against. This system is actually cheaper, or I'm sorry, I correct, correct myself. This system is actually more expensive, which you wouldn't think it should be, because it can't do what the first system does. And the program has to be loaded onto the town server in order to make it multi-user friendly, or accessed by multiple users. It is basically an upgrade to the system that's already there. If you go to page three, there's an estimated cost breakdown between the two systems. Also on this is a cost breakdown for different components of the system, the pros and cons of each system. But the, the bottom line is, is if you look under FPH Tank in the middle, you'll see that the new smart fill system they quoted is thirteen thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Just a few dollars more expensive than the quote I received from Star Petroleum. Now, with that said, we started looking around the diesel pump. We have eventual plans to pave that over there, but the problem is, is there's nothing on an island. Your dispenser in your pedestal with a card reader is not on an island. So if we pave that, first of all, we should, it should be, the dispenser, the pedestal should be raised off the ground so that you're protecting it. Secondly, there should be a concrete pad there, an impervious surface, so that when you're filling, any drops of diesel hit the concrete, not blacktop, not dirt. So if we eventually plan to pave this, we should do it right and put a concrete pad in there, probably a six foot by six foot. Okay? The second reason that's important is, on the last page of this, there's a picture, my questions page. That is a picture from this past winter where the pump stopped working, and I had to call DNM out to unfreeze the pump because all the water drained into the sump and froze the fuel lines. Okay? And you can see the. And you can see the rutting that happens in front of the fuel point with all of our tandems and synchroaxles that come in and out of there constantly. So, that is why we want to pave it. So, the bottom line is, I'm going to recommend at some point that the town consider upgrading the diesel system with a smart fill system and install a concrete filling pad and also an island that raises the dispenser off the ground. And as it stands right now, we are at about $21,329 cost, and that includes a 10% contingency in case something runs over. Now, with that said, tomorrow I have an appointment with a rep from FPH Tank. They're out of Orleans, Vermont. He's going to come down and he's going to actually look at our system. The thing that's concerning is this system, the fuel lines feed underground. They don't do that anymore. That's, that's obsolete. So, he made mention to me, if those are not double-lined pipes, you shouldn't be using them. They should feed from above, and they should be double-lined. Now, I was talking to the town manager today about some additional concerns, and I don't know if you had a chance of it. You did. So, we thought we may be opening up a can of worms. Because I asked the question, and so did Brent, when's the last time this tank was even inspected? We don't know. So, I was talking to the town manager today, and he's thinking his head, so I think he has some more information from the fire marshal on the code.
I do.
Okay. So, Mike?
Go ahead, Mike. So, I did call the, the Division of Fire Safety today and talk to GJ Garrow, and they're going to actually send somebody over here to look at it. They don't, they're not the authority having jurisdiction over it. They use contracted fuel vendors. What Chris explained to me and what I visually seen up there is not current practice. But we don't, what they're checking into is the grandfathering of policies. So, if we fell into this grandfather clause, and when it gets replaced, then it has to be upgraded to the current standards, which we, we don't meet right now. So, I won't, I won't know anymore until they meet with us and start talking to us about it, but there could be, there, there could be an additional cost to to have this tank inspected and meet the current, current codes. And it won't be cheap, I can guarantee it won't be cheap because it's got to be on concrete and it's, the lines have, everything has to be dug up, and so I don't, I don't want to be doom and gloom, but I'll wait, I'll, I'll give you an update or give Chris an update once Division of Fire Safety comes down.
And I'm going to ask FPH Tank tomorrow what they think. Obviously, they install them all the time, so he should be able to give me a, a pretty good idea of where we stand currently. But I do know that the price I just quoted you is, is for the labor, the new smart fill system, the pedestal with the island and a 10%, contingency. So, where that cost would go up is if they have to re, basically replumb the tank to the dispenser. There's no point, even though the dispenser looks bad mechanically, it, it works. And it's a model that's easily, we're able to easily get parts work. So, that's all $5,000 savings in itself, but I'm sure the price will go up, as Mike said. The good thing is, is the highway foreman told me he was able to do the concrete work for the pad. And we want to do all that before we actually pave it. So, this is going to turn into a, a bit longer project than we anticipated.
Everybody's got questions.
Yes. I don't have all the answers, but I'm working.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Okay, who's first?
No, Matt, go ahead, Dick, you're closest.
Just a quick question, what would be your best guess as to when you would recommend action on this?
Uh, as soon as I have all of the, um, as soon as I have all of the information, and I can tell you exactly what it needs and the associated costs, that's when I will formally make a recommendation to the board and let you consider. You'll have a cost matrix like this from all the vendors. And if you would like, I'll do a criteria matrix. You'll see the criteria, criteria we have established and how it's weighted so that you can see our mindset. On my current recommendation, my, I call it my running estimate, but I'm recommending the purchase of a smart fill system for all the things we talked about. I'm recommending that the final amount be rounded off to include the 10% contingency in there. I give you a reasoning, and we already talked about the other considerations that I brought to you. I don't have the answers on those. This has been a project that's been ongoing. Just finding someone to talk to about it that actually calls you back. It's been tough.
Okay, other questions? Mary Lee?
Just a short one. If someone else has your code, can they use it and are you know it's going to be used for whatever truck or whatever fire truck?
Some, some of the fobs and codes work, some of them don't, so.
No, I mean with the new system.
Oh, yes, yes, so.
There's no way that.
If I issue you, with the new system, if I issue you a proximity card or a fob, you're going to sign for it, that you received it. It's going to be numbered. You're going to be issued a, a pin number that goes along with it. So, if Mary Lee Harris decides to draw diesel fuel at 2:00 a.m., and, you know, we're going to see it. We could see it real time. Mike could pull it up on his cell phone. You get out of an alert that goes off.
Okay, what would happen if I gave him my code and the fob?
We, we would do, yeah, so if I found, if we found out that that would happen, then I would, I as a supervisor would document it. I would bring it to the town manager, and I would.
So, we couldn't get away with it?
Be a violation of a personnel policy.
So, we couldn't get away with it?
No, you couldn't.
Okay, that's what I'm really asking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just, Bob? Where's the money coming from, Chris?
Go ahead.
Uh, well, that's always the question.
Yeah.
So, I would say the highway reserve carryover is the easy answer.
Okay.
Okay, that's quite honestly, it's always an easy answer.
Come off the ARPA list, right?
You got anything more, Bob?
No, no.
Okay.
Dick?
One follow-up. So, so you would have the control to know if, um, let's say I was up there putting fuel in engine six for the fire department at 3:00 in the morning, that would be okay. But if I was putting fuel in Bob's truck at 3:00 in the morning, you'd be able to know the difference?
Well, I would know it was you filling it, and if, if you were on the highway department and it wasn't wintertime.
I'm talking about me as a fireman being up there at 3:00 in the morning putting fuel in the truck.
The camera system catches it.
Well, one, we have a camera system. Two, yeah, you'd be listed on there. I knew it was a, a fob assigned to you. It's your unique pin.
As you know, it's very conceivable for us to be fueling trucks up anytime.
Absolutely. And if there was a discrepancy, then we go back to the chief, the fire chief, and we say, hey, was there a fire call at this date, this time? This truck, it's on video. I mean, we could.
Okay, any other questions? Any other questions for? Joe, I'm sorry, Joe. Joe?
Is there, last week we talked about emergency management procedures. Is there any foreseeable emergency that would lock us out of our fuel system?
The current one? If, if, if you're referencing the current system?
The new system that's being considered.
The new system, no, no, it wouldn't be, even if the internet.
If, if the cloud crashed, we could still put?
Yes, you can.
Fuel in our vehicles?
Yes, yes. So, um, in the event that, let's say that it's the first of the month, and accounting logs on to the website to draw the numbers down and the websites down, or there's no internet at the town office, she could physically come up to the pedestal, pull a USB, and she could take that back to her computer.
And you can still get fuel, too?
And you can still get fuel, yes.
Perfect. Anything else, Joe?
No, thank you.
Any other questions for Chris? If not, thank you very much, Chris.
And I just have one final announcement.
Sure.
Fresh coat will start crack sealing tomorrow. Um, they should be here all week, maybe into next week. You could expect to see them on Creek Road, Blissville, Bryce Willis, North Road, the town office, the police fire department over there, so all the parking lots, and up at Crystal Beach, parking lot as well.
Thank you very much, Barker Hill. Mike?
Oh, yes, and Barker Hill, starting tomorrow, will be replacing a very large culvert up there, so I believe it was in front porch form the other day. Um, there may be some traffic delays, and that is part of the grant work that we're finishing up this year.
Just, just for tomorrow, though, right?
Should be done tomorrow.
And they'll, they'll be able to get emergency vehicles through and something like that.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Anything else? No, thank you very much, Chris. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris.
Moving on, coin drop requests. Fourth of July committee on June 4th, 2022. Rain date, June 11th, 2022. Castleman Fire Department, September 10th, 2022. The Castleman Community Center, September 24th, rain date, October 1st.
Make a motion, they would be approved as read.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second, discussion?
Yes, are these the only three?
So far.
How many do we do, do we do a certain amount in a year's time, five?
Yeah, and two of them are dedicated, one to the eighth grade, um, trip and the fire department. So, those are fenced so that they always get their, a, a choice. So, the only, the eighth grade, we don't know what's going on with them right now.
So, these three plus the eighth grade?
Yes.
I think that's gone away.
So, there's, there's still one more floating around, okay. How are they chosen? As they come in or some?
They're supposed to be all at once so that we, you could prioritize, make sure the, the fire department and the eighth grade, uh, class trip got theirs, and then prioritize them after that.
Well, I understand the Lions Club has applied for one.
I, I, yes, you are correct. I saw, uh, Pat Shorter, I think, sent out an email, so, um, it didn't make this packet, but I believe she's, Mary Lee is correct, that the Lions Club also has requested.
So, she got in under the deadline?
I don't know exactly what time to come in, Bob, but, um, by the time this packet was put together, I don't know. I wasn't here, so.
Well, I had to be in by April 30th, all right?
It was, I know it was.
So, I would say that we, I, I've seen it, so.
Okay, good enough.
Okay.
Can I make a?
Sure.
Mary Lee, do you, are you aware that there's a town policy about coin drops?
I know there's only so, so many that you can have.
If you get ahold of Karen, she could probably provide you with a copy of the policy. That would answer virtually all your questions.
Okay, I'll ask her.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Move on, Castleman Women's Club requests to use the town green for Colonial Day on August 20th, 2022.
I make the motion that we allow the Castleman Women's Club to use the town, town green for Colonial Day on August 20th, 2022.
I'll second it.
And a second. Will there probably be extensive discussion on this?
I'm done discussing it, sir.
You're done. Is that a Saturday, I assume?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all I had.
If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Approve the purchase of materials to make repairs to the roof of the building at Crystal Beach and replace the shingles. I believe we have some quotes.
I would move we accept a quote from the Valley Building Supplies for $3,542.67.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second, is there discussion?
Where's, where's the money have to come from?
It has to come out of their, um, their capital improvement, their.
The rec?
The rec.
Yeah.
No, it's on the beach.
It's on the Crystal Beach account?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do they have it?
They do, and it, it was more extensive damage than originally thought. The, some of the roof rafters were actually rotting, and they fell away from the building, so originally they were just going to do the roof, the shingles, and it turned out to be a little bit more complicated. But we're, the work is being done by town employees.
That was my next question.
Yeah, so it's not going up to, being up to a bitter end.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Quick then, Jim, uh, Mike, in your opinion, the people doing this work are qualified?
They are. It's, uh, the maintenance supervisor, um, is, is the, the lead.
No, sir, I was curious, too.
Okay, moving on to Rutland Regional Planning, Planning Commission Emergency Mutual Aid Agreement for the public works departments. We have a copy of that in our packet.
No, no change from the previous two years. This is the mutual aid agreement, so, and it's between towns. If we run into a problem, we need, we're, we have a truck broken down and we need help, they, they will give us help, we'll give them help after we take care of ourselves first, or after they take care of themselves first. So, it's, uh, it's not like we drop everything and go help them. We have to make sure our roads are clean and clear or whatever the case may be in that emergency, but it's just an agreement, a standing agreement that, between the towns. And it's something you, you approved the last two years, and it hasn't changed.
I'll make a motion, we have authorized the town manager to sign the Rutland Regional Planning Commission Emergency Mutual Aid Agreement for Public Works and Departments of its member municipalities for the current year ending on the first day of May, 2023.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
We assume that the other towns are going to pass this to?
They have, it's actually, they wanted it submitted with the local emergency management plans, but I missed that, that deadline, so that's why it's separate. It would have been on last month's.
Okay.
Okay, all, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes. Tim Gilbert, update, RCS, WD would not.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, certainly, certainly.
I noticed that the last page of this mutual aid document includes a form for providing information on the primary aiding official, alternate aiding official. Is that something that we should address on this occasion?
It is because it's highlighted. Suggestions?
Very last page?
Yeah, very last page, everybody. Everybody have it, last page highlighted?
It's not highlighted.
Well, let's see, because this is the original, that's why.
It's been the, me as the road commissioner and then the PPW director as the alternate.
You're the alternate?
No, I'm the primary, Chris is the alternate.
Okay.
In both cases, I would think?
Yes. Well, not for, not for local.
Also the primary requesting officials and the alternate requesting officials?
Correct.
Thank you. So, I appreciate the clarification. Presumably, you will complete that form before you submit this?
I will make sure it's filled out before it gets submitted.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I guess I mentioned that, uh, Tim would not be able to be here tonight. He will, said he will be at the next meeting with his quarterly report from Rutland County Solid Waste District. Moving on, manager's report. Any questions?
Barring your questions?
On his report?
There's a couple things new on there, but. Hold on. No, let's see, page one. I did send out a file to the select board that was, it was a large file, but it was the, the stuff for the pedestrian accessibility. Did everybody get that?
I got it, but you said you were going to.
Print, I'll print them out.
Print them for us.
Yeah.
It's 39 pages.
I know, and it's color and it's, um, that's, that took those alternatives that the board's already approved and broke it down into phases. But phase one was $1.5 million. It's a large grant for, for a bike and pad grant. They typically don't approve such large amounts as, for a single project. But that's, that gets the, the lion's share of the, at South Street and North, then from South Street and Main Street intersections down the north side to the Buell Block, and then down the south side to the store.
then down the south side to the store, Glenbrook to Glenbrook Road, and they had a, they had a bike path in there from Sand Hill Road to, into the Village, and I argue with them a little bit, just, just, I'm trying to give you a little bit of history. The, the roads that get paved, scheduled for 2024, the spring of 2024, to do all that work and just tear it all up again, just seems a waste of, of money when they can build it into their projects. And maybe that money that was going to be used for that particular part of the project can be put into a more sidewalk. But it's, I don't think it's an even trade-off, I don't think bike lanes and concrete are going to match up, but, but anyway, that was, that was the initial proposal from Nicole Fox from Fussin' O'Neil, and she's, she didn't have it all finished and be able to present it to you at this point, I just, I said I want something to give to the board that they can kind of see where this is starting to land, but, and I mean financially. So the board would have to, there's nothing in the budget that's going to solve 20% of $1.5 million. So you're talking $300,000. So we can probably scrape up 50 out of the normal annual cost that we put in the budget each year, but it's something to consider if the board wants this done, of how to, how to get, do, go about it, if it's going to be on the ARPA list or, or not. I don't, we, I don't know where we'd get $250,000. It won't be highway carryover, I can tell you that. So, but just wanted to bring it to your attention, Nicole will come back with a briefing, but hopefully you can open that product, or I can, when I get it printed out, I'll let you know, and, and then if there's any questions that the board has, Mr. Chairman, I will go back to Nicole and see if I can get them identified, so she can have the responses for you.
Any specific questions for Mike to go back to Nicole, the engineer? At this time?
Other than, we're not locked into this, are we, Mike?
No.
No.
No, it was a scoping study.
Okay.
It just gives us, identify the problem, they looked into, was it truly a problem, and alternatives for that, and there's no commitment to the town to spend a dime.
Okay, okay.
Okay, okay, Mike, move on.
The bike and pad grant for the Parsons Hills sidewalks, the engineering, the design has been approved to start, so they'll start doing their preliminary work, they did hire Mark Corcel for surveying, his local guy, so he'll be the one out there starting to do the survey, they subcontracted to him. You know about, I'm on page three, in Barker Hill, you know about that, that'll be a huge victory to get that done. MHG Solar, the gravel pit, Greener, or Greater Light USALC is now the owner of the, or the operator of that facility, or that, call it a facility again, the array, they owe their first $10,000 payment, and Melanie's working out the ACH, the transfer of funds for that, and Ted's working on the amendment to the contract, because the old contract had MHG Solar in there, and now Greater Light's there, so we want to make sure it's reflective of who is responsible, so more to follow on that, but.
Did we have any inclination they were going to do this? Is that typical?
No, but I talked to them afterwards, and they said they, they typically do all, it's kind of like hail and hail, right, they, they do all the preliminary stuff, and then somebody takes over the project, so. These are big companies that swallow up these things, and they just have holdings, so. It doesn't change, it doesn't change anything, they're still responsible for adhering to the contract, and I've spoken to them a couple times, they're, they're pushing to pay us,
Perfect.
I'm on page number six, sewer plant, I'll, I'll reach out to Jason, he did send me a, he did send me an email, I haven't read it yet, but, to get what he wanted to say to the board, try to get an email for him, and he can ask questions from there. You know that we awarded the Class Two Structures Grant for the, or the trestle? And the bridge engineers, we're still waiting on them to show up to find out if there's anything wrong structurally with that trestle? So more to follow, but I don't know if it'll make it better or worse, hopefully they'll pay for it if it's worse, right? Good luck.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Who owns that trestle?
The railroad, but V-Trans has authority over, A&R has portion of it, V-Trans has a portion of it, the bridge stuff is V-Trans, the rail bed and all that stuff, it falls under A&R, so, that's why it took so long to get an answer, because, and then the records were in New York, so to run all this to ground, it just took a while, but Chris did a great job.
I realize the load requirements for a half a dozen people is different than a train, but what happens if they decide that that structure is in danger of imminent collapse? Whose problem is that?
They'll be theirs, the V-Trans and, or the railroad, because it impacts the bed of the railroad, that they, they don't want that disturbed, for some reason, that has to stay viable enough where they can lay rail back down on those. Won't happen in my day.
Just in case they want to run a train again?
I guess, possession's nine tenths of the law.
You never know, pigs might fly too, right?
Yeah. So more to, once we get more information from the bridge engineers, I'll keep you guys informed, or you folks informed. I'm on page seven, under C, under FEMA, Little Rutland Road, it's spring, know what's coming, we're going to have Aton and Lori Chilkeski coming in here and talking about that, so I wrote my recommendation in there. I'm not sure what you guys, how you guys feel about it, but I think that sending a letter from our attorney to theirs, saying, "We own the easement," I read the deeds, and it says that it's the town's culvert through the easement, we have an opinion on it from Lois Baldwin, it just doesn't say specifically that we have to replace the culvert, it says we'll repair the ground, any, for any damage to stormwater, but we own the culvert and we put it in, and it would make sense if it fails, we own it. But I, but I don't think we own is, removing, retaining walls that they built over the top of it and all that stuff, because it impedes the easement, and it costs us, the town, a lot more money.
So what would we be responsible for, in your proposal?
To get any permits that are required, which I, right now, doesn't seem like Laura Dulugalecki says there's anything for the lake, as long as it's not being discharged in the water, goes into a splash pool or plunge pool. Josh Cabal from Rivers and Streams was there, he has no jurisdiction, so we'd replace the culvert, you know, purchase the culvert, we'd have to get permission to get onto the property, we'd probably have to rent a small excavator, because ours is just too big to get in there, ours is small, but it's still too big to get in there, and get permissions from the landowner to do the work, and not hold us.
So we'd only be responsible for the culvert? Is that correct?
Correct.
And what money do we have available for that?
We have the FEMA money that needs to be spent, because we're on our last period of extension, so it has to be spent by November 1st. But it was FEMA money, it was like 14 grand.
Do we have any, do we have any estimate from Brent or Chris as to how long they think it would take to do this?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
They've been up there, they did the, they made the repairs last fall, that were, it's, it was a washout from stormwater, the culvert's broken, it's rotted, and water was getting around the culvert and washed up sinkhole, I'll call it, and we had to go up and fill it in, so that, we took care of that, but it's going to rear its ugly head again, I just wanted to have a, have an answer that I can go to our attorney and start.
You need a motion on that?
Not sure if it's a motion, because I, it's just a proposal at this point, because they could say no.
Okay.
Just authorize Mike to go ahead and send the letter, have our attorney send the letter?
That'd be fine.
Yeah, just, I'm in favor of that.
We're not going to get anywhere if we don't.
Yeah.
No, I know, I understand.
All right. No, it drives a stake in the ground, I see no reason why Mike shouldn't do that.
Yeah.
Hey, Mike, you can do that.
Mike, do that.
Do what you gotta do.
I don't know if you want to leave that one open, then, but.
No, I'm on this project.
Okay. Page eight, six, under town office, under buildings, Wade Missour did an inspection of the fire station, the police station, and the town office. There are some issues that were found that we got to take care of, there'd be OSHA violations, so we don't want to get fined, so we'll start working on those, I'll share them once I have them back from Wade, I don't have them right now.
And Wade is?
Wade Missour from, he's our loss consultant from VLCT.
Okay, thanks.
And he was here Friday, so I don't have anything yet, a verbal. Oh, I'll, on number nine, on page nine, fire department operations, the officer group requested to meet with the public safety committee, I've talked to both members of, on the public safety committee, and we're going to work out a date to meet with them.
Mike, or Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt?
Sure.
Mike, can we go back to six, C, number two?
Six, C, number two.
Do you mind if I go over and look at that door and give you my opinion?
Absolutely not.
Because every time I hear the numbers, they're talking about to fix that door.
Yeah.
And I keep thinking about, you know, automatic door sweep, and maybe a little creativity.
It's got to be an outward swinging door.
Doesn't have to be an outswinging door if you do an inswinging door right, I've told you that several times.
So the heating, it won't bother the heating?
That's what I'm telling you about, that's what an automatic door bottom does.
All right.
So if you let me look at it, I might save the town like five or 10 grand.
I would certainly entertain saving five or 10.
Well, I've asked several times to have somebody call me from the fire, from the police department, and it hasn't yet happened.
Well, there's one guy that bitches every day about it, so.
Have him call me.
I'll have him call you.
At least give you an opinion.
Okay, okay. I did look up the door thing.
And I don't think Mick will be upset if he doesn't have to do this.
Probably not.
If he's like the rest of us, he's got more work in, he knows what to do with.
All right, moving on, I guess, page 10, number 10, Town Lands, if you get any kind of, your constituents asking about the common area and the docks, I haven't been up there yet, I got to go up and find out what dock space number it is, so I can write a letter to the last person that is on the agreement, ask them to remove a dilapidated dock, there's, there's a few up there, that are just kind of falling apart in junk, so I've got to get up there to do that, and there were some trees that fell down, and I asked the highway guys to go up and take a look at it and see if it's something they could do without damaging someone's boat, or, I don't want to do any more damage, so. Park and Ride, I think I heard some, next one on 10B. The, I, my, my personal opinion, or my, I guess, my recommendation on this, is to not even mess around with putting the lights on the former solar panels, it's going to be so much more expensive, because they got to run the underground cables and the lights, and if we just put the pole in the middle with two lights on it, if the, if we're not worried about aesthetics, and we're only, and we're worried about the safety of vehicles and people there, it'll get the job done.
I have no problem with that.
I don't either.
No problem.
Get it done.
It'll, that'll be done, that's easy, thank you.
Plus, the next if and when an LED light fails on that pole, it's Green Mountain Bowers problem, right?
Yes.
Pretty freaky, you come down that road, East Hubbardan Road, and you see this flash, yeah, like, what the hell's going on there?
Quivering.
Yeah.
That's, barring your questions, folks, that's all I have.
Do you have any need for an executive session?
Yes.
Right, I thought you did.
Yeah.
You did, you're okay, guys, all right? Okay.
For contracts, right?
All right.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mike? Board?
Bob? Yeah, that letter, the motion that I made, that only has to go to the DEC, it doesn't have to go to any other.
DEC.
Just the DEC, that's it.
Unless you guys want me to post it, we can post it with the, the minutes of the meeting.
That would be a good idea.
We got, I stirred up something here in the audience, I just, I thought maybe A&R had to have it, and Fish and Wildlife, but they.
A&R is the, Rob Steele, A&R is the head of the, A&R umbrella is the DEC and Fish and Wildlife, so.
Okay.
I, I don't know if they found a new commissioner for the DEC yet, I would try to send it to him, but I would also send it to Julie Moore, who's the secretary of the Agency of Natural Resources, she's the one that oversees all those divisions.
Okay, you got that, Mike?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
Could I suggest?
Yes, yes, Joe.
I think we know the gentleman who is in charge of the process.
Misha Center.
Of the, the application review, I can't think of the name at the moment, but I know some of you have referred to him in the past, I would hope he would be part of the communication chain.
That's Misha Center.
Yes, exactly, thank you.
I'll get the information from Jim on that one.
Yep. Anything else?
I got one other thing, and.
Are we on Select Word Concerns?
Not yet.
Well, these are questions for Mike, I mean.
Okay.
What happened, and this is in the past, what happened with the college? You set that Jefford Center up at beginning of April, first week of April, second week of April, and they call you 24 hours before we're supposed to meet, and say, "I don't know, that's not going to work, you'd be better off at the Casella Theater," why didn't they tell you back at the first week of April? One, Jefford Center wasn't good, but two, the most important thing is, oh, we can work with your electronics stuff a whole lot better with Casella Theater, why didn't they tell you that at the beginning of April?
I don't know why they didn't tell me, but it's their recommendation based upon everything that they, they heard that we wanted to do.
Okay.
I mean, it was one of those things where I, I went with a recommendation, because I'm not the IT guy.
Yeah, okay, I just, that, 24 hours before we're supposed to meet, and they throw all this at us, that's just not good.
Anything else for Mike? Okay, purchase orders for approval. We have one here for North Star Fireworks, $10,000.
Make a motion, we approve purchase order 048069 to North Star Fireworks, for the total amount of $10,000.
For a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Moving on to the warrants.
Make a motion, we approve warrant number 0509R for $650, warrant 0509 for $65,801.96. Warrant 0505 for $21,943.13. Warrant 0428 for $5,977.20. Warrant 0505P for $17,833.60. And warrant 0428P for $17,212.13.
Is there a second?
I'll back up.
And a second, discussion on the warrants. Seeing none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, guess it's unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 0506P for $634.28. And warrant number 0429P for $634.28.
Second.
And a second, discussion.
Recuse myself?
You recuse yourself. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. There you go, Bob.
Hey, Jim.
Whoops, what did I got here? Here's another one goes in there, Bob, but there's no signature on it.
Okay.
Where it goes.
Oh, okay.
Put it with a pile, Mary Lee, that one doesn't matter.
There you go, Bob. Another one.
Jesus, Jim.
You have the, you have the letter?
Yeah.
Okay.
She's done the 17.
Seventeen?
Trying to find this. Clean drop request for the. I'll get that clean drop request. I got it on my phone too, but I'm not going to be able to find it.
I will do that for you. I should be doing that anyways regardless of bum knee or not.
You're still younger than I am, Bob.
Thanks.
This is a staple, Jim.
That Downsy up there?
It is.
He's watching the Red Sox lose, probably.
I knew you were going to say that.
I was just about falling asleep, so I don't know.
You're muted, John.
You're muted. We can't hear a word you're saying. I kind of like that, though.
Somebody spoke for that all the time, I suspect.
And the score is? The Celtics?
A lawyer with nothing to say.
Mary Lee, who do you think would have sent that? Because I looked under Pat's rotor.
I think it was Pat because I had written to her and asked her if they had sent it and she said, yes, it was sent in plenty of time.
I'll get it. I'll reach up.
Think I've seen it.
Yeah, I know I've seen it. I just can't remember what the date was. I don't know why I didn't.
She assured me it was in the right.
Okay, moving on to Select Board comments and or concerns. We have one announcement. Margaret Petty of the Tax Department will be leaving on May 17th. I would entertain a motion to accept her resignation with regret and wish her the very best, thanking her for her service to the town of Castleton.
So moved?
Second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second, any discussion?
Thank you, Margaret.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Margaret. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, all this Select Board concerns. Mary Lee?
First, I want to thank Mike. I I like that he's putting the minutes and the attachments, but I'm going to sound like a broken record. I think we are blatantly disregarding the law. We are not giving recordings. Conversations are not being provided when records are requested. Such excuses. Minutes take time because of the lack of secretary. One person does not take the time to read them. He doesn't have the time and approving minutes of ones taken. Evidently, we've gone through seven secretaries and sometimes minutes are not taken from whether it's not Select Board necessarily, but are different committees. And it's the law, I was told, but nobody follows it. And I can remember telling my kids when they're little, if you jump, if your friend jumps off the bridge, does that mean you will too? So if other towns aren't following it, does that mean we shouldn't either? I think we should be a little more careful about making sure that we have everything available and on time. Again, it's been over six months to get the information that my daughters asked for.
That's being certified mail to her tomorrow, just so you know. It was it got left to the weekend because she responded to Jonas on Saturday, I think it was Saturday or Sunday, and he wasn't working, so he left it he left it with Margaret, but Karen's got it in a package and it's going to be certified to her tomorrow.
Okay, and I've got one other remark. Tomorrow, I'm taking a course for the Select Board and it is called Legal and Effective Meetings. I think we should all take it, not just me.
Okay, thank you, Mary Lee.
Since Tim Gilbert's coming at our next Select Board, that gives him two weeks, Jim, can you get the total of the Rockland County Solid Waste District surcharges collected for 2021 and what is still owed for 2021?
Okay, slow down. I'm taking I'm trying to take notes here.
Just the total dollar amount.
Surcharge?
Surcharge collected in the year 2021.
Got it, next one?
It relates to that, what is still owed for 2021. The hollers carry on into the following year for five or six months, still owing for 2021.
2021.
I want to see the that dollar amount.
No problem.
Thank you. All the other stuff I've already asked Mike, I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
We've already covered everything.
Okay, Joe?
I just wanted to reinforce what one of the comments that Joe Bruno made in tonight's meeting. I was one of those who was frankly appalled that the district dropped cut $170,000 from its budget, which they were intending to spend on the support of the Castleton Village School, and lowered their overall budget by a mere 30 some odd thousand dollars, which suggests to me that they increased expenses by almost $140,000 in some areas. And that coupled with the $4 million budget surplus that Joe referred to certainly would indicate that the district has the capacity to help us through this first year in supporting some of the expenses that we will now incur of Castleton Village School, even though we have not budgeted for them. So I just think we we need to push back pretty hard against that and bring to Brooke and Tim's attention the fact that this is not just a personal concern of the town manager or individual members of the Select Board, but it is a concern of citizens and voters that could redound against the district if they don't find a way to shift their position and help us out here.
Would you like that communicated to the Slate Valley Superintendent and Chairman of the School Board tomorrow?
Yes, please.
Okay, can we do that, Mike?
You want to do a formal letter?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else, Joe?
No.
Okay, I guess that takes care of that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Can I add something? Joe just brought up something that caused me to think. Is it a and I think this is a question for Mr. Mark. Is it a reasonable expectation to think we'll be closing on a on a change in ownership by July 1 of this year?
I think so. That depends on the lawyers.
Okay.
But I believe they're they're aiming for that deadline.
Okay, I'm just to follow up on that. Would it be reasonable to expect them, if it doesn't close, to maintain electricity in the building until such time as the ownership does change?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Anything else? That's all I got. Okay. If not, we'll move on. Brief recap and items, follow up, anything on that? Seeing none, okay, exactly, yes?
So next meeting, just to just to make sure, next meeting is you want something on there for ARPA, right?
Yeah, we've got to get we've got to get fancy on that.
Specifically what we're talking about there, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mark, but we're talking about having at least a preliminary plan on how we're going to proceed, primarily with getting public input, is that correct?
Yeah, I I think this topic deserves, I mean, this is one of the greatest expenditure responsibilities that the Select Board has probably had in a long, long time. And I think we owe it to the voters to have a highly transparent public process adequately announced. Specifically, I think we need a special meeting on this topic when presumably we will review lists that the manager has provided, but also allow members of the public to make comments about those ideas and others that we are considering.
Anyone object to that?
Not at all.
Not at all?
But that's especially Mr. Mark just said a special meeting, so you want how long do you want it before proceeding a Select Board meeting or you want on a different night?
I'd go with a different night.
Okay.
And is there any is I can pull the board, I guess, but send something out by email and get some feedback. I don't want to schedule it and you're not there and you're not there or you're out of town.
Yes, yes, sure.
Okay. I will do that.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I believe you need an executive session.
I think Dick and Joe wanted an executive session for contracts.
We do.
Want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we go into executive session at 8:42 with the board and the town manager for labor relations and contracts.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second?
Let Joe second it, yeah.
And a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're in executive session for labor relations and contracts.